Hi, Janice. It's Samir. How's my audio?
Samir, you're coming through clear. Thank you.
Good morning, Council Fortina checking in.
Good morning, Council Fortini. You're coming through clear.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. It's Garpata checking in.
Good morning, Council Tour. You're coming through clear.
Thank you.
Good morning. This is Council Barra checking in.
You're coming through clear, Council Barra. You're coming through loud and clear.
Thank you.
Audio check. Check one, two, three.
Council Visante, can you do a mic check for us, please?
Check one, two, three.
Thank you. Coming through clear, councillor.
As we begin today's meeting, we'd like to acknowledge that we are gathering here on the Treaty Torii of the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation and before them, the traditional territory of the Haudes Sani Huron Huendat. We also acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis, Inuit, and other global Indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. We are honored to live, work, and enjoy this land. I'll ask that we please rise for the singing of the national anthem to be followed by a moment of personal reflection.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in our command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Welcome to our regular council meeting of May 15, 2024. Mayor Brown is traveling on other municipal business, so he asked me to chair this meeting as Deputy Singh is also not available. So we don't have the mayor, we don't have the deputy mayor, so you get the councillor that usually sits beside the mayor. And we're gonna have to get through it. So all members are present today with the following participating online. We have, I believe, councillor Vicente, councillor Barra, and councillor Fortini online. Is that correct? And who's? Mayor Brown's on other municipal business, and Deputy Mayor Singh is on other municipal business. Are we missing anyone else? No, we're good. We're now at item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any updates from the clerk?
Through the chair, there's no updates.
Okay, thank you. Does any member wish to add any business items to today's meeting? Councillor Paleshi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Adding, no. I'd like to defer two items with their bylaws from today's meeting to the June 5th council meeting. Eighteen point one and thirteen point one is, I believe, the Mississauga Road application. There seems to be some confusion, some adjacent landowners and residents confusion. So I'd like to try and clear that up prior to that for council's ratification. Also, ten two one, eighteen six. Ten two one, staff have done an amazing job in getting this report before us as fast as they can. Unfortunately, it came in last night, yesterday, which I think we always knew, but I'm not comfortable with the amount of, you know, information that is in that report and trying to get that pushed through today. Also, I had a discussion with Mayor Brown. Mayor Brown really wants to be here for that discussion as well with the budget amendment and the new hires. So ten two one and then the bylaw eighteen point six. So I'd like to defer all those to the June, the June 5th council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Tour?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I have one item from planning to add on to the agenda. Commissioner Ghanesh.
Through the chair. This is what I would characterize as an administrative bylaw for release of funds for subdivision in Ward's 10. Typically, these types of bylaws are dealt with on consent by council. There are no remaining works left to be done by the applicant, so pending council's decision today, we are ready to release the whole back of 10% to the owner. And the bylaw has been provided to clerks to add to the agenda if that's the will of council.
Okay, because it is a council meeting, we do need two-thirds to add an item to the agenda. So do we have two-thirds? Anyone opposed? Okay, so that item can be added. And, sorry?
If councillor Paleshi would be open to this, the item that you want to defer, the ten point two point one, the legislative services one, if we can just discuss that at least, I would say let's have a...
So, so it's my understanding that Mayor Brown wants to be here for that conversation? So I think it's best that we just leave it deferred and then discuss it at that following meeting. You okay with that?
Yep.
Thank you. And also, I have one item. I would like to defer item thirteen point two, which was the BIA boundary. So just some quick context. I wanted Paul had to speak with the BIA?
No, we're good.
No? We're good. We can do it? Okay, good. Okay, so we need to summarize that?
Sure. So to summarize, we're deferring ten point two point one and the associated bylaw eighteen point six. We're deferring thirteen point one and the associated bylaw eighteen point one, and we're deferring thirteen point two. And we have added as item eighteen point eight by councillor Tour, the subdivision release and assumption bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, sure.
I thought we're gonna defer the ten point two point one to next meeting. So if we could do it to committee, then we can discuss it and I'll give us enough time, then again, it'll come back to council. The mayor will be back next week, right?
Still good. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion moved by councillor Paleshi and seconded by councillor Tour to approve the agenda. All those in favor? The motion carries. We're now on item three, declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any members have any declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note for the meeting minutes. We're ready to move on to our next item of public business on today's council agenda, which is item number four. We have the following council minutes before us today. Minutes of City Council Regular Meeting, May 1st, 2024. Do any members have any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by councillor Tour and seconded by councillor Power to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor? The motion carries. Council, as part of our consent motion process, I will reach each agenda item that is subject to consent motion, and any member may verbally identify any item to be held for debate during the meeting, and any item not held for debate will be considered as part of the consent motion and voted on for approval. I'll start reading the relevant agenda items, and members can identify any items to be held for debate. Item eight point one, staff update regarding government relations matters. Consent. Ten point two point one was deferred by councillor Paleshi. Twelve point one, minutes, Planning and Development Committee, April 22nd, 2024. Consent. Twelve point two, minutes, Committee of Council, April 24th, 2024. Consent. Twelve point three, minutes, Citizens Appointment Committee, May 6th, 2024. Consent. Twelve point four, minutes, Planning and Development Committee, May 6th, 2024. Consent. Twelve point five, summary of recommendations, Committee of Council, May 8th, 2024. Consent. Thirteen point one was deferred. Thirteen point two was deferred. Nineteen point one, closed session minutes, City of Council, May 1st, 2024. Consent. Nineteen point two, closed session minutes, Citizen Appointment Committee, May 6th, 2024. That's in consent. There will be a motion to arise in public because that was approved on consent. Nineteen point three, closed session minutes, Committee of Council, May 8th, 2024. Consent. I'm not sure we need it summarized. I think everything's been deferred or on consent. The clerk will summarize those items to be included on the consent motion for approval.
Thank you. Through the chair. On consent is items eight point one, staff update regarding government relations matters. Twelve point one, minutes, Planning and Development Committee from April 22nd, 2024. Twelve point two, minutes, Committee of Council, April 24th, 2024. Twelve point three, minutes, Citizen Appointments Committee, May 6th, 2024. Item twelve point four, minutes, Planning and Development Committee from May 6th, 2024. Item twelve point five, summary of recommendations, Committee of Council, May 8th, 2024. Nineteen point one, closed session minutes, City Council, May 1st, 2024. Nineteen point two, closed session minutes, Citizen Appointments Committee, May 6th, 2024. And nineteen point three, closed session minutes, Committee of Council, May 8th, 2024.
Thank you. I have a motion moved by councillor Barra and seconded by councillor Maderos to approve the consent motion. All those in favor? The motion carries. We're on to six point one, which is proclamations. Today, we have a number of them. I will start to read them out. We have Tamil Genocide Day. The Tamil people have endured significant hardship and tragedy throughout history, including severe persecution, human rights violation, ethnic cleansing, and genocide perpetrated against them during the Sri Lankan Civil War. Over thirty, over forty thousand Tamil civilians lost their lives during the last stages of the war in May 2009, and over 100,000 lives were lost in the three decades of struggles for human rights in Sri Lanka since 1949. The Tamils, who have made Canada their home, numbering about 500,000, have greatly enriched our country through their leadership in various fields of inspiring younger generations to become successful and contributing citizens. May 18th serves as a reminder of the Tamil ethnic cleansing and genocide, providing an opportunity for survivors in Canada and around the world to reflect on the enduring, on the enduring lessons of ethnic cleansing and genocide and rededicate to peace and the protection of human rights. The Tamil Memorial Foundation, a coalition of Canadian organizations, is committed to commemorating and educating about the Tamils from the island of Sri Lanka and their history, culture, aspirations, and the sacrifices made by their ancestors in the, in the long march of freedom, human rights, and self-determination. The Ontario government has passed legislation to demonstrate, to designate, sorry, May 12th to May 18th each year as Tamil Genocide Education Week. Initiatives recognizing this week include Tamil Genocide Education, candlelight commemorations, and the Tamil Genocide Education Conference will be undertaken to advance awareness and understanding of the atrocities endured by the Tamil community. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim May 18th, 2024 as Tamil Genocide Day in the city of Brampton. Next, we have Menstrual Health Day. Menstrual Health Day, MH Day, is celebrated on May 28th and is a global day of action with more than 830 partner organizations working together to catalyze awareness and action towards a world without period poverty and stigma. The period purse strives to achieve menstrual equity by providing people who menstruate access to free menstrual products and to produce, and to reduce the negative stigma associated with periods through education and advocacy. Cities across Canada will be lighting buildings red and proclaiming May 28th, 2024 as Menstrual Health Day. Menstrual Health highlights the importance of menstrual equity, public education advocates, and equitable access to menstrual products through day raise awareness and remove stigma around periods. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim May 28th, 2024 as Menstrual Health Day in the city of Brampton. National Public Works Week. Whereas, from May 19th until May 25th, 2024, the city of Brampton will recognize National Public Works Week to celebrate the significant role public works professionals play in our community. Advancing quality of life for all is the theme for the National Public Works Week this year. The city of Brampton's public works and engineering team performs critical and essential work on the front lines of our community through the entire year. This includes construction and maintenance to keep sidewalks, roads, and bridges safe for essential travel, signal and street light management, spring sweep, cleanup, catch basin cleaning, and street sweeping. Thanks to their hard work, Brampton residents can... to their hard work, Brampton residents can travel on our roads safely, ride their bikes, go for walks in their neighborhoods. Public Works helps to keep our community safe, clean, and moving. For this and more, we are grateful. The city of Brampton encourages residents to learn more about the important work these professionals play in keeping Brampton safe during National Public Works Week. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of City Council, hereby proclaim May nineteenth, 2025, or, sorry, May nineteenth to twenty fifth, 2024, as National Public Works Week in the city of Brampton. Is Public Works here? Oh, amazing. So-
Not all of them.
Not all of them? Well, thank you, Counselor Paleshi. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good morning, members of council. My name is Berta Meyer. I'm this year's chair for National Public Works Week, which, as mentioned, is happening from May nineteenth to the twenty fifth, and this year's theme is advancing quality of life for all. Public Works contributes to advancing and enhancing our quality of life, no matter where we live in the world. Public Works professionals provide essential services that lead to healthier, happier, and more vibrant communities. National Public Works Week is a great opportunity to motivate and educate the public on the importance of public works in their daily lives. As public works professionals or employees, we are incredibly proud of the work we do and are excited to share this with everyone. This year's National Public Works events include, on Tuesday, May twenty first, opening ceremonies at City Hall in the atrium and flag raising at Ken Woolen Square. Also, speed mentoring at WPOC with Access Employment. On Wednesday, May twenty second, is the Truck Rodeo and School Tours at WPOC. Thursday, May twenty third, the Bus Pull at 175 Sanderwood, as well as the Commissioner Challenge and United Way Fundraising Barbecue. On Friday, we have our closing ceremonies at WPOC, including staff awards. We thank you for allowing us the opportunity to make our announcement and for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I definitely, we're gonna take a photo, but just before we do that, last year was the first year I was able to participate in some of the events, and I think I wasn't pulling the bus. I obviously don't have the strength for that, but I sure was a good cheerleader. So, if you could all just get up and take a quick photo. Thanks. All right, we're on to Moose Hide Campaign Day. The Moose Hide Campaign is an Indigenous-led, grassroots movement of men, boys, and all Canadians standing up to end violence against women, children, and all those along the gender continuum. The Moose Hide Campaign was founded along the Highway of Tears in British Columbia in response to injustice and violence faced by women and children in Canada, particularly those who are Indigenous. Intimate partner violence is at an epidemic proportions across Canada, with more than four in ten women having experienced it in their lifetime. And this reality is worse for Indigenous women, who are twice as likely to experience violence from their current or former partners. The Moose Hide Campaign gives Canadians who are looking to participate in the nation's journey of reconciliation an accessible and important path forward and an opportunity to help stop violence in our communities once and for all. Wearing the Moose Hide pin demonstrates a commitment to honor, respect, and protect the women and children in your life, end gender-based violence, and take meaningful actions towards reconciliation with Indigenous peoples. The Moose Hide Campaign has distributed over five million Moose Hide pins that each spark five conversations about issues of violence against women, children, and all of those along the gender continuum. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim May sixteenth, 2024, as Moose Hide Campaign Day in the city of Brampton. And the last one, National Accessibility Week. Whereas, National Accessibility Week was established by the Government of Canada in 2017 and inspired by Rick Hansen's Man in Motion World Tour thirty-six years ago, more than eight million Canadians and twenty-seven percent of the population age fifteen and over have a disability. The city recognizes that removing barriers and enhancing access to our good services and facilities is essential to providing increased opportunities that foster independence, inclusion, and dignity for people of all ages and all abilities. The city of Brampton is committed to accessibility and the unique contribution that each resident makes to the local community. National Accessibility Week aims to create awareness, celebrate the work of allies and organizations who are removing barriers and creating accessible and inclusive communities, and acknowledge the valuable contributions and leadership of Canadians with disabilities. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim May twenty sixth to June first, 2024, as National Accessibility Week in the city of Brampton. So, the next item, oh, eight point one was on consent. And here we go. I think it was all, is there announcements?
Yes, six point two.
Oh, sorry. Six point two is announcements today. We have Brampton On Stage June to December 2024 season launch. The council sponsor is Regional Counselor Santos, and today with us, we have Stephen Shipper, Executive Artistic Director, Performing Arts and Culture Services and Community Services, will make this announcement.
Thank you. Good morning. Through the chair, Performing Arts is supporting the city's 50th anniversary by celebrating Brampton artists. Brampton's son Kirk Diamond is featured on the cover of our brochure. Brampton Arts Walker Fame recipient Scott Thompson will grace our stage at LBP. Grammy Award winner and Bramptonian Larnell Lewis once again leads Flow Fest. The list goes on, and features Brampton Music Theater, The Rose Orchestra, Brampton Concert Band, and includes all the phenomenal artists who comprise our unique, spectacularly successful series called This is Brampton. Tickets may be purchased online at bramptononstage.ca or in person at the box office located at The Rose. None of what we present onstage or accomplish offstage would be possible without the investment we receive from our mayor and each of our city councillors, with a much deserved special mention to Counselor Santos. So, to all of you, for all your considered support, we say thank you. It's also my pleasure to thank our staff, leadership, and colleagues at the city of Brampton, Community Services, Cultural Services, and Performing Arts. Thanks also to our cherished volunteers, donors, sponsors, and most especially to our audiences, the citizens of Brampton, the GTA, and beyond. Together, we are the faces who comprise the beautiful mosaic that is Brampton. As we celebrate our 50th anniversary, together we make a wish for the arts in Brampton to flourish and inspire, build community, grow empathy, drive economy, and through the power of stories and entertainment, create a better world for us, our children, and future generations. Thank you.
So, Counselor Santos?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Stephen, for this very exciting update. We have our magazine and our program for the upcoming season, as well as a new item that you've given to us, which is live performance that educates, inspires, and entertains. I'm just gonna say a few points, three points here with respect to this announcement. I'm so proud of how the arts in general, arts and culture in general, in Brampton has really flourished, particularly over the past two years, two to three years. And Stephen, you've been, you've played a significant role in how we have progressed, especially with respect to performing arts. I had an artist call me who used to be in performing, or still is in performing arts and is very successful now, from Brampton, who now lives in LA. And they messaged me just yesterday because they visited the Brampton Arts Organization office and was floored. And they said to me, I can't believe the incredible things that are happening in the arts in Brampton. I can't believe how amazing the Brampton On Stage program was last season and how it is now, and all the support that artists in Brampton are now receiving, not just from the city and the acknowledgement from the city, but also in like the broader community as well. And Stephen, I know, for folks who don't know, Stephen's retiring and is retiring, I think officially as of Friday. Is that correct? And when you first came to us from Alberta, I want to say, oh, no, Manitoba, we, you know, you were so open to bring your experience and success from that province over to Brampton, and you applied it, but you also applied it with your ears open and open to new ideas and really embracing who we are in the city of Brampton. And the rebranding of Rose Theater Performing Arts to Brampton On Stage is direct feedback from council, who said, we want to see Brampton onstage. We want to see our diversity, our artists, celebrating our local talent on our stage. And in this past season, I gotta tell you, I attended almost every weekend a show and supported a show almost every single weekend. Some weekends, it was twice, on a Friday night and then on a Saturday night. And the audience loved all of the shows that we put on. And so, I'm so excited for the new season because it looks fantastic, and it's gonna be hard for me to accommodate all the different beautiful programming into my schedule. But Stephen, from the bottom of my heart and from council and the mayor's hearts, thank you for the difference that you have made in arts and culture in the city of Brampton. Thank you for putting Brampton onstage.
Thank you, Counselor Santos. It's been an honor and a privilege to work alongside the other leaders and everyone on the team at Performing Arts and in Cultural Services. We're all very, very grateful to council and the mayor for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna miss you, but I know where you live, so you're not too far away.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this will bring us, everything else was on consent, but I do, just for clarification, Counselor Paleshi, both of the items you deferred were deferred to the June fifth council meeting. Is that correct? Yes, as well as mine. So, everything deferred today was on, was to be deferred to the June fifth meeting.
Through the chair, thank you. There is no public delegations, and there is no correspondence received, so we can move right to public question period.
Okay. What were the referred matters list? Do any members have any questions regarding their referred matters list? Seeing none, we can move to public question period. Now we can deal with this. This is normally where we invite members of the public to come forward to the podium and ask any questions about any decision made at today's council meeting. There's a fifteen minute limit. My clerk, is there anybody online or here?
Through the chair, there's no one online. Is there anyone in the audience?
Counselor Santos?
Mr. Chair, have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Because this is a short council meeting today, I just had a question for the chair. How did the chair feel about his performance and chairing today's meeting on behalf of the mayor?
I know, I can tell you this, I don't want to hear him complain. It's pretty easy. Thank you, Counselor Santos. It's okay. After this, I'm going to 400 events, so. Okay, thank you, Counselor Santos. That brings us to item eighteen, which is bylaws, which will include Counselor Ture's added eighteen point seven. So, we're now at the portion of the meeting dealing with the adoption of the city bylaws. To give effect to council decisions made at this meeting, I have a motion moved by Counselor Ture, seconded by Counselor Santos, to approve the bylaws. All those in favor? Thank you. The motion carries. There is no closed session. Oh, but we have a motion. So, what item is the motion on? Nineteen, so nineteen point two? So, this session was approved on consent direction. Okay, so there's a motion moved by Counselor Ture and seconded by Counselor Vicenti that the following person be appointed to the GTAA Consultative Committee as a citizen member effective for the 2022 to 2026 term of council ending November fourteenth, or November fourteenth, 2026, until a successor is appointed. Interjet hands. Say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? The motion carries. Confirming bylaw? Our next item of business is item twenty, the confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by Counselor Paleshi and seconded by Counselor Power to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and the decisions made in this meeting. All those in favor? The motion carries. It brings us to adjournment, last item of business. Wow. Mayor Brown, take note. Our last item of business is item twenty-one, adjournment. Our next scheduled council meeting is May twenty ninth, 2024, or committee, council meeting is May twenty fourth, May twenty ninth, 2024, sorry, at nine thirty AM. I have a motion moved by Counselor Maderos and seconded by Counselor Vicenti to adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor? Carries, we are adjourned.
Woo-hoo, well done.